I'm sorry, I'm kind of, I got a lot of stuff going on.
Before we start, I'd like to make one suggestion. We have dedicated funds, and one of those is the cemetery fund. So, we've accumulated 150 something thousand dollars in the cemetery fund, and we're not going to spend, you know, hear that, on our normal maintenance. As you recall, we've now switched properties with the church. We'll have a resolution on the agenda to formalize that, that activity. But the road that caused us to, you know, to do that is that half gravel, half asphalt road that was built to get in when you were filling the new cemetery site. And so, we can only spend this money for cemetery. Dave has done an estimate of redoing all of the city-owned roads in that cemetery with our manpower and our equipment, and it would cost no more than $35,000. So, I'm recommending that we go ahead and take the cemetery fund and put in a $35,000 road improvement, and go ahead and get that done. Yes? Or you've got a funny, like, you're going to ask me a question?
No, I think it's a great idea because we've been dealing with this half gravel, half phase road for quite a while. And it does, it looks good.
We're going to do the concrete.
Cemetery is not the best looking cemetery in the area.
We bought that rolling screed last year, and because we own it, we can, we can do that work ourselves, which is why we can do it for $35,000.
And the money can only be spent there.
Only there.
What, are you going to have a half asphalt, half concrete?
No, we're going to do everything concrete.
Okay.
We're going to tear out whatever's there, and we're going to put concrete in, all with that. Out wide, two lanes, be 24 feet wide.
Has anybody thought about, like, the entrance to it, too?
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to have to get an entrance permit from, or we're going to have to get a permit from the state to redo the entrance, but we're going to go ahead and put flare, you know, entrance in and grate it out, and put a covert in it so it drains, and we don't end up with pool, pools of water at the entrance.
You're going to have somebody do that who's, because that's tricky with some of the, you mess up those headstones, or, you know what I mean?
We won't be anywhere near the headstones.
Yeah, well, there, some of them right there, at the entrance.
We won't have a problem with it.
Did the foundation put in for, or share, like they usually do?
I got it in there. I have not got the letter from Bob yet.
Okay, but you got it.
But it's in there.
All right. Okay, that's it. Sandra's up.
Okay, I don't know how these things usually work, so...
Well, here's the, here's the situation.
Okay.
As you know, we have less money than we need. And so, the Board of Alderman expressed last year a desire to speak to each department head to kind of get a sense of their priorities, because since we have more budget requests than we have money, particularly coming out of the general fund, they wanted to know from the department heads what was kind of their list of importance, so that when we have to do the inevitable amendments to the budget to balance it, we're taking those actions consistent with the priorities that the department heads expressed. So, your job is to talk about priorities.
Okay, great. Let me start by just giving a little, set the stage for the importance of tourism in terms of economic development and budgets at a, at a more of a macro scale than, than the city budget. With that in mind, I have in front of you a sheet that shows Missouri, enjoy the show. And for those who may be new to the board, or maybe have not seen this information before, I just thought this might be useful in helping frame the discussion. This is a target market profile for travelers to Missouri. You will see that average income, education, and so on, the average travel party size is three people. They tend to spend, an average daily spend of $90 per person, and they usually spend three nights. Now, this is across the whole state. I don't know that three nights average stay is where we are yet in St. Genevieve, but I, you know, certainly would like to get to more stays, more overnights, and longer stays. So, this is just for your information, maybe just a tourism 101, and I would add to that just this very brief statement. Tourism promotion leads to economic growth and increased economic activity in a community. Using the limited resources, and I do understand we have limited resources, and I fully appreciate that, and I intend to leverage these resources that you've entrusted me with, or will entrust me with, at whatever level, I intend to leverage those whenever possible. It is the goal of my department to showcase, showcase the best of our community, to promote more activity by locals, their visiting families, and their guests. All of these are visitors, when they come to stay with us, or go out to restaurants, or whatever it might be. And also to attract new and repeat visitors who will bring new dollars into our community when they visit. This is very different from any other type of expenditure that we will consider. This is one expenditure that leverages new dollars coming into the community, that's what I want to point out. The ultimate goal is to draw more visits to our destination, hence the Missouri information, to encourage their enjoyment of our attractions, which will result in greater spending and increased tax revenues on multiple fronts, of course. Whether it's their spending in lodging, food services, recreation, wineries, gas stations, or retail businesses while they're here visiting us, and these may be your relatives while they're here visiting, these may be, you know, a couple who's never been to St. Genevieve with their children, you have to picture visitors as many different types of people. These sales bring new dollars to our region, they support other budgets through increased tax revenues, and they help stabilize jobs in our community. In addition to the sheet that I put in front of you, I did some additional research on Missouri Division of Tourism's database that's online, and they estimate in fiscal year 12, that for the 17, I'm sure you're familiar from previous presentations of the 17 SIC codes that are considered tourism SIC codes, they estimate 11,959,158 dollars were spent in St. Genevieve County, so that's almost $12 million in tourism spending amongst the 17 SIC codes. So, the dollars that you are considering spending on your tourism program are leveraged to a very high degree in terms of dollars that come back to the community, and I just want to frame that discussion in that way. And when, the state also has an index that they use to consider how much those $12 million spent inside St. Genevieve County translates to in terms of the number of jobs that that's helped support, and it's 444 jobs in St. Genevieve County, for what that's worth. I just thought it was interesting to kind of look at that from that perspective. And so, in that regard, you have in front of me, in front of you, several documents. One of those is, I believe, something that you have probably not seen before, because Sue just helped me put this together earlier. But as I was looking at the traditional way that you see these budgets, I realized that there are several items under capital outlay that are offset by other revenues, and so I felt that it was important to draw your attention to that fact. So, you have one sheet in front of you that says Tourism Department Outside Revenue Sources. Looks like this, but without the chicken scratch on it. So, if you look at that, this shows, if you look over at the FY 2014 Proposed Budget, I've been very conservative in estimating these outside sources of revenue. I honestly think that we will exceed $30,000 in tour revenues, but you do have an expense line item in your budget that shows tour expenses. So, I want you to see that there are revenues that go along with these expenses, they're not just expenses that exist independently. So, these are revenues outside of general fund tax dollars. Sales from the interpretive center, you see that I've estimated that at 1,500, that's probably very conservative. The co-op grant, it's listed as a capital outlay on your budget of $49,700. I know that you've probably heard this many times before, but that is a program that we are reimbursed at a rate of 50% for approved expenses. And so, that 25,000 is indicated here, and a couple of other smaller things. Notably, there's also, in the past couple of years, the county has, they call, this is called a donation, it's really the county appropriating $5,000 to assist with the tourism program, to make sure that we're promoting the whole destination, because it does benefit the whole county. So, that adds to, as you can see, 61,750. So, on the budget that I laid in front of you, which is 290,633, if you consider these outside revenue sources, the total impact is actually 228,883, just for your revenues.
These revenues are already in our revenue projections for general operating revenues. So, it's not extra money that we have.
No, but it's not shown on, right, it's not shown in conjunction with this budget, so I wanted to be very clear to draw, you know, the dotted line, so it's easy for people to see that these revenues are connected with these programs.
So, if you eliminated tourism, you'd eliminate $61,750 worth of revenue, is what...
And $12 million of economic activity in the county.
400, over 400 jobs.
Right.
Well, that, you're taking credit for every visitor that comes.
Right, but I'm just extending your point of discussion.
It's kind of a return on that's a question, you know?
Exactly.
If you have $290,000 being spent, you're saying that if you didn't have this program, 61,750 of those dollars that you're showing us, general revenue wouldn't be coming in, because they come in because the Welcome Center exists, and we have a tourism marketing program.
Right, and I'm also not including the Tourism Tax Commission, because dollars, the bed tax that's collected, I didn't include that here, because you have that on a separate sheet, and I hope that that's pretty clear in terms of how that relates to our program. If people weren't spending the night in our bed and breakfast and generating the lodging tax with it.
So, the question that I think you're addressing by your comments is that for the dollars that the city spent, there's some direct revenue you can identify, but then there's the contribution it makes to the overall sales tax revenue, which is, while harder to quantify, at least at the state level, they've done some evaluations.
Yes.
That you're suggesting we rely on to consider the impact that...
I think it's very important to consider that impact, yes. So, the other thing that, that I wanted to point out was that we, when you look at the proposed budget, as I said, I tried to be conservative in what I felt the projected revenues were, and I also tried to, I wasn't trying to do zero-based budgeting, as you can see. This does represent a 9.3% increase overall, in the overall expenses. And I'm fully prepared to, you know, to pare down if and where I need to pare down, if in your discussions you feel like that's necessary. But I wanted to point out that some of these categories, for instance, if you look at page one of the, of the FY 2014 Budget for Welcome Center General Fund, if you look at the first page, there are roughly 56,625 in the materials and supplies, that includes, 30,000 of that alone is just marketing expenses. And in terms of priorities, that would be one place that I would hope not to have to cut. And obviously, you can see that I proposed an increase in staff salaries available. I've evaluated the staff, and I feel that it would be worth our while collectively to make sure that we keep the talent that we have, and that we compensate them accordingly. And so, I have increased that, and if I need to cut back in some area, I would probably rather cut back into other areas than, than that proposed increase.
And what might those areas be?
Well, I guess if, I need to know...
How much?
Right. I don't know what the other discussions have been. Apologize, but I was a little bit busy. Was you at a fiddle for the weekend to be able to watch all the proceedings on television?
Employee insurance, that's like, 13 is 92.75 for the proposed budget, 27,333?
Well, she's taking a employee who is currently part-time with no benefits.
Oh, I see, I didn't know that.
Supposing she go full-time with benefits?
So, that's what that, that...
It does jump up, and I am, to understand that insurance overall is going up in addition to just, yeah, just that.
Sandra, on, I hate to get in the line, but there, one of the things that does seem interesting, line item 6,000, materials and supplies printing.
Mm-hmm.
In 20, 2011, it was budgeted at 17,000, we spent less than 3.
And actually, you're reading the actual 11 and actual 12, and, and I can point out that this is an area that, if we're looking for areas to cut, I can cut that one, because after putting this together, I learned that every two or three years, we redo our Visit St. Genevieve brochure, and that costs close to $9,000, I guess. And so, that's why, Tom, you saw a spike in 2011, that was the last time we printed that brochure.
Gotcha.
So, I knew that it would be less this year, so I took it from 20,000 down to 14, but I can probably cut that if we, you know, I don't want to go by all line items, but I think that would be an area that we could possibly pare down.
Because you have enough brochures to get you through...
Well, we'll be printing that in FY 13, so we won't have to print it again in FY 14, if we do a good job with it.
So, that $2,686 is going to be higher by the time we get to the end of the year?
Yes, that budget.
By 9,000, give or take?
Yes, my projection is...
My projections, I think it's around 20,000.
My projection is, I think, about 18,000. That we'll have an actual...
Then you'll be good for 2014, because you'll have your inventory.
2013, yes. 18,000, that's my projection. So, I'm hoping to come in a couple thousand dollars less, even on this fiscal year's printing budget.
So, kind of, what do you, 4,000 enough?
Yes, if I, if I had to pair it to bare bones, I'm thinking that probably we could do 5,000 in that category, for 14.
How many of you are doing 10,000?
Oh, myself and three part-time.
And you want to say one part-time and make it full-time?
Close to it. What, what I'd like to do is increase the hours and pay of that individual, so that they would make sure to retain the individual.
Okay, so you're just talking about moving one person up to full-time, not hiring another person, though?
Correct, it's not to increase an entire person.
You're going to lose a part-time slot, is what you're saying?
I'm part-time, I've got a full-time slot.
Right.
But, so there'll be one less part-time slot, is that correct?
No reduction in headcount.
Three people, one of them working more hours. Yeah.
And do you need all three people?
Yeah, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
The others work relatively, you have, so...
Correct.
I don't know what Mercedes works, but I never see her there.
Currently, she works every Sunday, pretty much. So, currently, I have about three-person days between the other two employees. So, it is, you know, it's a minimal amount. It also gives me a little bit of flexibility if a person is out sick or something. I have someone who, you know, we haven't maxed out in terms of...
Hard to find somebody that works every Sunday.
I would think so. And, and, you know, does a very nice job, so... And, and the staff are working pretty well together in terms of, you know, trading off and accommodating family weddings and weekends and that kind of thing, so...
Who takes care of that, I guess, but cleaning down there?
Well, I'm glad that you asked, because before I started down there, I didn't know that it was us. We clean our own building and pull our own weeds, and with the grace of the street department, they have helped us do a lot of spiffing up of the building and the grounds, and repainted our chipped benches, and they've really done a great job. No, our staff cleans the toilets, mops the floors, washes the windows, they do all the facility janitorial work, they and myself included.
Do they, don't mind?
There must have used to, well, I don't know about that, but I'm trying to set a good example and say if, you know, one cleans, we all clean. I think there must have been a time when there was a line item for janitorial services, and maybe it just got zeroed out.
But I don't think we had full-time staff at that time. I think it was more, I think it was more part-time, wasn't it?
Kenny, remember? Kenny Cox used to...
Yeah, Kenny did, street department, street department guys, right.
Yeah, I know you haven't had it, Kenny tell you about it.
Any services?
I think we had quite a discussion on that a few years ago.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It was happened five years.
You going to go back in, sell any trinkets down there?
We plan to, yes.
Offset some of the cars.
Yes, I want to make sure that we have things that will represent our brand and our image in the right way, and also that we don't compete with the local shops. So, we're doing some research to find out what that might be, but the short answer is, yes, we will continue to have items for sale. I don't have a very big budget for it, but we will continue to try to offset those costs.
I think some of they exclusively sold there, gave it to some of the shops, didn't they, so we really wouldn't be running competition.
Mm-hmm, yes, and well, specifically, one of the, I mean, one of the items that's almost like a public service that we sell are the water and Gatorade, and I have found, by looking through the records, that we're paying a premium per bottle, and so, we're looking at, maybe we can buy those from a different source and make more per bottle. So, that I'm trying to do everything that I can in terms of identifying savings, and also representing it to, in, you know, in a way that you would be proud.
And also, they took some displays out or something, didn't they, down there?
I've completely redone the displays.
I mean, I've been in there.
Yeah, well, come on down sometime.
I hear different ones talking that used to go down there a lot, said that...
Yeah, I hope that, I took before and after pictures, so if you hadn't been down there in a while, I can only say that I think if you walked in today, you would be pleased with the way that it's presented.
There haven't been any displays taken out since I've been here, you know? I know there were, the whole configuration of the building was different originally.
Well, at one, for a long time, it was more historic representations in the cabinets, and then it went to more, more commercial, different shops could have their stuff in this cabinet for some timeframe. It was, it was, it went from more of a, lack of a better term, historic presentation to a more commercial presentation.
Well, and that probably coincided with the shift in thinking about marketing for tourists.
I don't know, I don't know where that came from. I think like everything else, you have people, like one thing, people like the other thing, and that's why, you know, I think that's, you have to manage that partner, I think that's, that's a very big deal. And I have been in the Welcome Center a few times lately, and it's, there's a different feel when you walk in the door. I appreciate it.
Okay, so without going line item by line item, because you and I can do that, can you give me an order of magnitude of what you think is feasible for savings without affecting your overall effectiveness?
The quality? Well, with Sue's help, we identified in the loggers retirement, for instance, that is currently shown at 508.7. We found out that probably that's going to be more like 3,650. Postage, I think if, I could probably lower that by about $800, primarily because I can buy up some stamps, you know, and they're good, so, and...
Are you able to commit to something on that 6,000 printing?
Yes, the printing...
Well, I'm sorry, line item 6,000.
That's a $9,000 savings there.
Right.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that.
Yes, I see what you... Yes, I see what you mean. The line, the cost center number is six thousand. The bare minimum I could probably do that for is five thousand. And if that was the case, I probably would be looking for other grants and things like that that we might be eligible for to make up some of the difference.
Are you going to use all your money out of tour expenses?
That is one area that I think probably, again, Sue and I looked at that this afternoon. And I think that we could probably drop that back to about twenty-six-five, which would be another... Is that eighty-five hundred dollars?
Here's your due... What do you have now?
Tour expenses, cost center seventy-one oh six.
Would you, you're going to pull that back to twenty-five?
Twenty-six thousand five.
So... Six thousand...
What does that make it then? What does it make it?
Twenty-one hundred.
Reduction is about nineteen thousand eight hundred, whatever it costs.
Another area that I think probably we could save about five hundred dollars. And it, to me, it's a little bit risky. We had twenty-three hundred dollars in the budget this year for building, repair, and maintenance. I know that, you know, in the past, you had actual of thirty-three hundred, two thousand. There wasn't much maintenance done in 2012. So, I had originally left that at twenty-three hundred dollars, but we could probably drop that back by five hundred dollars if we had to. Bearing in mind that if some major system goes down, we're going to have to...
But you can always come back to us.
Well, that's what I was just going to say, that maybe, you know, if that's the case, I mean, you know, knock on wood, everything won't fall apart tomorrow, but...
And what about your office equipment? Could you cut that in half?
Oh, I can.
Well, no, I mean, if she wants another employee...
You're absolutely right.
I don't mean to be nitpicky, but I mean, we need to do checks and balances, is what I do.
Yes, my priority would be to... She's looking at the two thousand office equipment?
Got to find someone.
Yeah. That's what I'm looking at, you know?
So, your suggestion was one thousand?
Yeah, maybe get rid of some holiday decorations. And your landscaping, you know?
We might...
Yeah, but do we know what impact this is going to have on the Welcome Center?
Do you know what impact it would have if she had a full-time employee that we could afford?
I think that's really significant.
But I think it's something that she needs to take a look at a little bit to see what impact all these cuts are going to be.
Well, this is, we're in a discussion.
It's nice to be sat here in five minutes while you're all this out.
Well, we're just in a discussion, that's all we're doing.
I don't know, I mean, wouldn't they have interrogated anybody else like this as far as...
Oh, yes, we have.
Which line items do you have?
Not that it's an interrogation, it's we just questioning, where can she, I mean, that's it. She wants a full-time employee, we're trying to accommodate to a high employee.
And I'm certainly, I mean, to me, that's, and I appreciate your chivalry, but I'm certainly up to the task of pairing the budget. And, you know, as I said, when I put it together, I actually went with the nine-month figures and did kind of a projection and then figured, okay, with this as my projection, what do I really think I, you know, would need next year? And in an ideal situation, you know, I'd love to have the whole, you know, the whole figure. But if we need to cut, these are okay areas to cut.
So, how much we need to cut?
Well, we're...
That's kind of, that has to ask her.
Huh?
I mean, I'd love to have the...
If she wants to go to a full-time employee, she should have a figure of what the cost is going to be.
Well, right now, based on our discussion, the way my math works, there still needs to be a decrease of four thousand dollars to get back to the 2013 budget, based on what we just discussed right there.
To add the full-time employee, right.
What we're trying to do is go back to 2013.
Well, I'm just using that as an example. If we look at moving an employee to full-time and having the benefit of ownership of a full-time employee within standard budget to get back to 2013, which would be a zero, a zeroed-out budget, no more, no less. Based on this conversation, the notes that I took, we'd still be looking at around, we need to find an additional cost savings of around four thousand dollars, forty-one hundred dollars. And that would bring you back to zero in 2013 and achieve the goal of bringing an employee to full-time.
She's come up with nineteen-four already, I'm just on what we talked about. Could you cut your marketing budget at all?
I had twenty-eight, twenty-eight...
I would follow my sword before I do that.
No, I'm just...
I understand.
Yeah, I'm just saying what she's, we talked about so far. Yeah, we're on the same page.
If we're within...
Was that a wrong thing to ask?
Yeah, if we're within four thousand dollars, I'm willing to find additional cuts and maybe I can work with Martin and Sue to find that additional four thousand dollars. I'm also perfectly willing to go out and beat the bushes for additional funds to add to this side of the equation too, because, you know, that's where this all comes from, is...
How should we frame this sixty-one thousand dollars? And help us understand how that impacts the actual outlet budget? I know you went through that.
Yes.
But just to walk me through it, I'm a little slow this evening.
Well, and as Martin pointed out, these items, since they're in, you know, in the four thousand series, these are all revenue items that are elsewhere in your large budget, which I don't see the whole thing. So, to me, it's important because I, you know, if I only see expenses and I'm sitting in your seat, I think, well, you know, let's just, whatever, cut that marketing budget, which is very small to get with.
So, this is just from the Welcome Center pretty much, revenue?
Correct, right. This is the fifty percent match that we earn for the twenty-five thousand dollars that is put in by the community. We earn twenty-five thousand dollars from the state of Missouri. And so, that's where that twenty-five thousand comes from. The tour revenues are, very simply, these are tours of people coming to St. Genevieve to go through the historic homes and so on. So, that's thirty thousand dollars earned there. And the sales, as you pointed out...
Is that the passport sales?
Yes, that includes that. It includes that.
We get one dollar for each passport ticket, right?
Yes. And the rest goes to the homes.
And the rest goes to them. And so... Is that thirty thousand passports sold?
Well, no, because, well, there are fifteen dollars each, so, and there's other revenue included there as well.
It's not simply just passports, like passports plus.
But that's good, that thirty thousand gets offset by the thirty-five thousand on the expense side of it. I mean, that's just, you're showing revenue, but you're showing the thirty-five thousand in expense on your tour expense. You're paying back thirty, you're paying most of the thirty-five thousand out to the houses, is that right?
Right, well, that's why I said that I feel like that line item could come down. The tour expense line item could come down. And I believe that was part of what Tom already included in his totals. There was one thing that we didn't talk about and, except for the fact that I said that I'll go out and beat the bushes to try to find additional dollars to help build the program because it takes more than thirty thousand dollars to sell a tourism program. So, I am very willing to continue to push for more dollars that would come in in terms of grants and donations. Probably more so grants than donations because right now, if I push for donations, I'd be competing with the River Gate Park, so I'd hate to do that.
It looks like, yeah. If the goal is to zero at 2013 level, you're really pretty close to being able to do that and achieve a big goal that you have for your department.
Yes, thank you. There aren't a lot of line items, you know? It's not a very complex budget. The only thing that really makes it complex is where all of the offsets come into the department from. And it was very helpful for Sue to show those to me because I knew they were out there somewhere, but they're spread out across so many different pages and codes that I asked her to put it all into one sheet so that it's easy to see. If your goal as a board is for me to, in effect, have a zero-based budget or, you know, pretty close to that, I can certainly abide by that. But just know that I'm going to be writing grant proposals to, you know, to try to augment it.
But to get that full-time employee.
Yes, that's a good point.
I've got to say that, the other department had, we've asked about, is there, is there something you can do with your budget that the immediate answer would have been no? And you've been able to, in fifteen minutes, find twenty thousand dollars, you think you can, if you're asked to, you think you can?
Right, I mean, you know, in a perfect world, I'd still, you know, maybe next year, things are going better and we're bringing in more people and the revenues from taxes are higher as a result, then it would be great, you know, to move in that direction of growth.
Tell me year after next.
But the other departments, we asked for three, five, or seven percent to put money in the road. That's what they said no about.
The other departments are not an investment in future revenues. The Street Department doesn't make any money for any business or the tax base. The Fire Department, the Police Department, the Parks Department, they don't, that is a straight cost. Tourism is an investment in a return, not only for the city and its budget, but also for the business owners in town that have their own money at risk. We want them all to do good because, for no other reason, at least we want them to do good because it generates more taxes for us. So, I really look at this very differently than I would look at the Street Department budget or Parks budget because it's a straight cost, it's just a straight cost. We're not trying to generate revenue for the city with those departments.
That's the reason we pay taxes. People pay taxes in order to have good streets.
Right, but, Ted, you're missing what I'm saying. You're, I agree, I agree. I'm just saying this is different. This is an opportunity for revenue.
We're still looking for revenue out of the Tourism Department.
Well, I think that Sandra represented that...
It's hard to target what revenue actually is.
I think Sandra represented that there's twelve million dollars that comes to this county through tourism efforts annually.
You recall, we provided information over last year that showed the movement in the general sales tax and the movement in the...
Margin?
No, the businesses that Sue tracks that are tourism-sensitive. And that differential, arguably, is something you can attribute to our, to our marketing effort. And you could say, again, you can't prove anything, but you could say if we hadn't spent thirty thousand dollars in whatever on marketing, we wouldn't have seen that increment difference between the tourism-sensitive income and that which is not tourism-sensitive. And it has led the path, I mean, we've been up by a fairly good increment throughout the year. And that differential may not be there if you didn't market your community.
You know, you also have to take into account the number of people who may have at one time been a visitor or a guest here, fallen in love with the community and subsequently bought property here. And now they're new, you know, they're new taxpayers, they're new residents, they're eating in our, you know, restaurants and shopping in our grocery store full-time as opposed to when once they were a tourist.
Tourism revenue, the taxes that we get from somebody else other than someone lives here, that's a beautiful thing. That's somebody else's money that we can spend on the citizens of St. Genevieve. That'd be a beautiful thing.
I think tourism dollars are great, but I just said it's hard to really figure out exactly how much you're getting back in tourism dollars. And that's one good example right there. But another good example is the last two Jody Fets have been wonderful. Why was that? Maybe nice weather?
Yeah, it should be some of that to the hard work of the Jody Fett committee as well.
Yeah.
Well, Tom, come on. I know what you're saying, everybody works hard. We try to put on a good show for the Jody Fett, but everybody knows it's weather too.
And a lot of people's looking for short trips. They're not making them be fifteen, hundred, two thousand, two thousand mile trips. You know, I worked in Branson for years and that was one of the things that, that was talked about in the paper and in business owners. When the economy was bad, Branson did well. Because people didn't go to Disneyland, spend four thousand dollars with their family. They went to Branson and spent fifteen hundred, eight hundred dollars, or two thousand dollars with their family. They could drive there to the flying and all those things too. And, you know, not a, not a time for a marketing strategy, but, you know, this... Forty-mile, fifty-mile radius, the more of those people, you know, that's, that's the things I'm talking to people. Well, I'm from Chester, yeah, we went over there last weekend, went to this restaurant or whatever. If you, if you surrender the investment of tourism, or if you stop it, you're certainly not going to increase tourism if you, if you stop the effort. And if you surrender the effort, all these years past has been wasted, the money that we spent. The branding, the things are different. I mean, if you, if you look at our websites and you do, do any look, any research, you know, the, one of the things that always puzzles me is the little trifle things that cut at the rest stops, you know, in the restaurants, those little carts, you know? I'm not a tourism guy, but I'm not going to be driving down the interstate and say, "Oh, look at this, let's just change our entire vacation plan that we've planned on the internet for months to go and do this today." So, I mean, the shifting of new ideas and new focuses, I just, I have a bit of a problem to hold fast with our tourism efforts. It's totally different to me as opposed to looking at the Street Department budget. It's a straight cost, we're not ever going to anything back. The businesses in town, the taxes that are generated, that every citizen benefits from tourism. Every citizen in town benefits from tourism.
I agree.
So, I think it's worth, I think...
My comment was, it was hard to track tourism dollars.
Oh, I agree.
Okay.
Right, so...
Where did this, on your sheet here, the ten thousand dollar grant, where did that come from?
That is the community, or, excuse me, the Economic Development Fund dollars that wholesome donates to, to the community. And the tourism program has to apply for that sort of funding.
So, there's a possibility you could give one next year?
Yes, you have to, you have to apply every year.
Right.
But yes, well, and so that's, that's another example of why I was conservative because we don't have a yes answer on that. Technically, we don't have a yes answer on the county's contribution of five thousand dollars to the budget. But I'm hoping that they would at least do what they did before. If not, maybe I might be able to convince them that by shifting our focus to destination management, maybe it's worth it to increase their investment.
Sounds like a small contribution from the county to our effort. Sounds like an extremely small contribution.
Well, I think there's...
We asked for fifteen.
There's, I think there's been a perception over the last, I don't know how many years, that, that there hasn't been as much promotion of the destination as a region. It's been maybe pretty focused on just the downtown. And so, current thinking in destination management is that you try to attract someone for, you know, who was it that said about, when you go to Disney World, you just don't go to one place. You're going to plan to go over here one day and over there one day and over here one day. So, you need to have a multifaceted package to present to someone so that they're going to spend one night and not just make it a day trip. And... to spend one night and not just make it a day trip and maybe even several nights.
Get to that 3.1 average.
To get us to the 3.1 average. Very good.
First goal, first goal is to get there.
Yes, yes.
So we will get together, you and I.
Yes.
And we have something to report back to the board when we start finalizing the budget.
Well, just for my benefit, what is the process after this work session?
We don't know. We'll make that decision after this work session.
I didn't know if you...
We're going to have, we're going to have to schedule, you and Steve are the last of the department of presentations, and then we're going to have to schedule at least two more meetings, I'm thinking, to say, we'll take one of those and none of those and come up with a final budget that makes sense. It's not something that we wanted to do or shouldn't do without the input of the more resources.
Wonderful. I just wanted to point out also that there are opportunities that come up in addition to, you know, grants that we might write to augment the funds that our community has available to, you know, for promotion. There are opportunities that come up from time to time, and there was actually one that came into our, my inbox and Martin's inbox this afternoon. And you have to be able to have some flexibility in your budget to respond to these opportunities because they don't just usually call and say, hey, we'll give you, you know, 2,000 or 5,000, whatever it is. It's usually at least going to be, if you've got 2,000, we'll put 2,000 with it, and then you'll have a $4,000 budget. So I think it's important to be able to have some flexibility there in those.
But you can always come back to it.
Well, that's, that's a good point, thank you. Do you have a measure during mid-year of how you're doing on tax revenues, like for the general fund?
We know every month.
So I'm just thinking, is it reasonable to think that, like, in April, May timeframe, that you would know, you know, FY14 is tracking ahead of schedule or?
We can make reasonable projections kind of based on overall trends, but just because the last three months is up doesn't mean the next three months isn't going to be down. So you just, you know, you don't, you can't spend the money, really. So we do an annual budget, sometimes we stay within it. We do stay within it.
Kind of tries to curve it.
But, you know, it would have to be a pretty substantial windfall in order for us to do a major budget amendment based on anticipated tax revenues, not just kind of the normal movement in our, in our tax revenues, which we hope will continue to go up. But it's, you know, what's it up to, 17,000? You know, so.
Well, and I appreciate your noting that because if an opportunity, I mean, I wish I had a crystal ball, I know you wish you had a crystal ball to know what to expect next year, but if an opportunity comes up and I have an opportunity to come back and say, you know, if we've got 2,000, we can get four, you know, so.
You can handle that, can't you?
I can handle the discussion and the presentation, I can't make the decision. You'll have to make the decision. Now, if I can do it within the constraints of a budget, I can do it without a meeting, you know?
Well, I appreciate your time, and if you would like to come down and visit us at the Welcome Center, we would love to have you and show you around to the new displays and some of the new things that we're doing and...
What are our hours right now?
Nine to five every day. Every day.
Seven, eight?
That's it. And you'd be surprised, the variety of people that come through the door, and it's, I mean, we have international visitors, we have all kinds of visitors.
You've heard them to sign up, sign the guest book, pretty much everybody.
Yes, yes, we try to capture as many as possible. And I don't know, as of 2:30 on Saturday afternoon of Juret Fett Weekend, at that point, we had surpassed, you know, they do a stroke tally of people walking through the door, just in case people don't sign the book. At 2:30 on Saturday afternoon, we had surpassed the previous numbers for Juret Fett, even though last year was a really good year. Was it you that had pointed that out? At 2:30 on Saturday afternoon, we had passed those numbers, so we had a record day on Saturday.
For Saturday.
For the whole weekend.
The whole weekend.
Yeah.
Saturday by 2:30 exceeded the whole.
And, you know, Sandra and I kind of discussed this about, you know, she was thinking, maybe we should get somebody to fly over and take a picture and do a crowd estimate.
Oh, I wish I could. Next year.
But all things being equal, the number of people who went into the Welcome Center would proportionally be the same or close to the number that went through in the same event the year before. So it is a good kind of barometer. I don't know what the multiplier is, but I don't know how many people that would calculate, but it does tell you kind of gross numbers that it was up by that factor.
Right. What Martin's referring to is, I really would have loved to have an aerial photograph of the crowds going through the streets. And at the time, you know, I didn't have long to plan, so I called Steph Greminger, who's on our Tourism Advisory Council, and I know that her husband flies an ultralight, is that the name? So as it happens, they were going to be out of town at some kind of ultralight convention, or I would have asked him to take a picture of us, a picture for us while he was up there.
Mike, you still does that.
All right, so we'll work on that for next year. I'm still kind of hoping that those planes that were buzzing around on Sunday during the park dedication service, I'm hoping that maybe we can find out who some of those were, and maybe they took a picture out their window while they were up. If I was up, I would take a picture. So I'm keeping my fingers crossed, maybe it's not, yeah, maybe it's not too late.
I don't get airsick easily. One of the times I did get airsick, I was taking pictures out of a private plane for a real estate thing. I would take a picture and he would bank, and I would take a picture and he would, I got so sick.
Oh.
Put them in a little bag.
Kind of hanging out the window, you know, you come back and, oh, you played this way. Yes, sir.
I guess I'm going to start with you on tourism. Is that building alarmed?
Yes.
Does it have the fire part of it?
That one does.
I just replaced the battery, as a matter of fact.
No, I'm an actual...
Yeah, that calls, the calls an alarm service.
Is it automated? Yes.
It goes through somebody. And you can discount through the insurance.
They're aware that it is alarmed. I have never seen a specific line item, but hopefully it's reflected in our rates.
I got to give them a contract every year.
Yeah. Out of there, we asked for that contract.
A new center there.
So it's off them.
If that's critical on all of our buildings.
John brought this up after the fire down here. Your, what is alarmed in the water department? Nothing?
No.
Okay, I thought you had alarm, Terry was talking to me last year about putting in an alarm system.
Yeah, we had got prices on that last year, and when it came down to it, we got everyone showed up to do the work. We tried to get in contact with them again, and...
Okay, so I'm not misremembering it?
No, we did look into it, yeah.
Well, maybe we can save some money on our building insurance, even if it's 50 bucks.
Yeah, the visitor center sprinkles.
And sprinkles, too.
That's sprinkled down? Yeah.
Thank you for your time. Come and see me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know what it is.
We'll take it five minutes before we get to Steve.
Sure.
Look at Steve, what?
Steve, you're last. Everybody's geared up.
Steve's up.
What should we cut, Steve?
What day did the...
It's 10th of July.
So Steve has prepared this budget which reflects the rate adjustment that was voted on back then. What page is it?
Page thirty-one.
I'm not going to steal his thunder. I will let him go through it with you. But it's a balanced budget that also sets money aside for the capital improvement fund that you recall was discussed at that time. And you don't have to go over every line item, but kind of go over the big issues here.
All right. We'll start with the percent increase on the water and sewer rates. The water rates would increase four percent and the sewer rates would increase five percent as far as the reformo that was adopted.
So that's already been decided?
Yes, but the rates haven't been.
The decision was to commit to a schedule with the knowledge and understanding that the board at every budget cycle gets to kind of think about it. But all of the debate about the options and what we could do and how much revenue we generate, all happened last year.
On the water side, like I said, we talked about the four percent there. Not sure what to go here.
Well, you protected revenues of a million three. And you bumped up the emergency fund balance by seventy-five thousand dollars. So that comes out of the revenues in excess of expenses that you anticipate for this budget here.
Yes.
We left the CD alone because obviously if you're saving money for the future, you're not going to use your CDs. The salaries issue is the allocation of the office staff's time for water and sewer collection.
You'll see the special services there line. Seventy-sixty was raised five hundred dollars.
What page is it?
Page thirty-three.
Just the thirty-three, seventy-sixty.
There's been an increase in number of locates called in. That's what that is for there.
When someone calls one eight hundred, they write, "We get billed."
Really?
It didn't used to be that way. That's a long time ago.
Next one, the infrastructure improvement. The capital improvement projects there would be the SCADA system at the water plant.
Inform the board what SCADA stands for.
SCADA system is the operating system at the water plant. It runs the allows us to operate wells, all the pumps, monitors tower levels.
It's a computer system.
It's a computer system that makes it all work. It is deteriorated to the point it's beyond repair if it is to go down one more time.
Been an issue for a long time. I know it's been discussed here several times.
There's been a few different IT departments look at it and some won't touch it because it is too fragile and it is beyond repair at this point.
Isn't the software proprietary also?
The software is owned by a company out of Illinois.
Yeah, and only a couple of people who would be licensed to do any work on it anyway.
And the way it is right now is this company, Fast Technologies, out of Glen Carbon, Illinois. They own the rights to the program and we can't even go in and change anything. And they won't.
How much is the new program? How much do you think of it? Estimate how much it would cost to?
Hundred and seventy-five is all the SCADA?
No, hundred and thirty-five is to retrofit the system.
What line are you on?
Hundred and thirty-five thousand would retrofit the system with a new upgraded system. And it would have the capability of allowing other IT departments and computer guys to work on. Right now, we're not serviceable at all.
And the forty thousand left is what?
The other forty thousand that would be left would be the wasting valves at the water plant. We have one valve now that is leaking and possibly two. The others don't close completely. It is increasing our water loss at the water plant itself. And it's increasing the wasted water from there goes to the wastewater plant. So it's increasing flow there also.
So when we lose it, then we have to create it.
Right. Not to mention, we're spending a lot of money to prevent the ionizing. And those valves come in at just under ten thousand. What's that? The thing is, you guys want to come by and look at them.
They're talking about a work session.
Yeah, I mean, they're fourteen inch valves. I mean, they go on a size this big.
You've got a big wheel.
They actually run off of water pressure. They're self-sufficient off our system pressure. And the water will actually open both valves.
Yeah, we're not doing ionizer.
And they're also driving the SCADA system.
Oh, I think. I think the old paddle is.
I think it's twenty years.
You put in that.
Yes.
So we're looking to replace a twenty-year-old software system.
Yes.
Pretty good mileage for a software system.
We have taken measures at the water plant. We put a new TPC unit in there to keep the chlorine out of the room. We've sealed and caulked everything, created a forced air environment, air purifier and dehumidifier to try to extend the life.
Steve, how much last year did you guys? How much came back to us last year from the water department?
You mean from their contract?
Mm-hmm.
I'd have to look that up.
Do you remember how much it was?
It was thirty. No, it was thirty-five. Is that what you're thinking?
She said fifteen thousand.
That mine was like fifteen.
Yeah, so something fair views there.
You got twenty bucks in the stable. We'll knock that off right.
I think definitely you need to update your systems.
We were just talking up here. It's obvious we're not going to get St. Mary's syrup and road water projects done. And we're going to have a work session next Thursday before our regular meeting to discuss these things. And so that or some permutation of that's going to carry over. It's going to have to be reflected in this year's budget. And it's not now, is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
On the up here on line seventy-fourty for the engineering, eighty-eight thousand, eight fifty there. In order to have the project designed this year and pay for that out of this year's budget and then the work to be done next year, I think is the goal there.
Well, we can, like I said, we can discuss that at the work session. But concern is you're not spending out of your infrastructure improvement line item this year amounts that you had planned on spending.
Right.
Because you want to discuss with the board a different approach.
Yes.
Nor have you reflected any of those expenses in next year's line item, infrastructure line item. Or is that hundred and seventy-five kind of your estimate of what portion of that you're going to spend?
No, the hundred and seventy-five was.
That's the SCADA system and forty thousand dollars. And I will have to work on that.
Steve, the eighty-three thousand you spent this year on engineering already?
Yes.
Is that St. Mary's? Is that those projects that you're not going to be able to do that go rather falling over to next year?
The eighty-three thousand we spent this year, I believe, was Horn and Schiffer.
Yeah, and that was a grant. So it was that facilities model grant that we had them to.
So we really haven't paid that much on the engineering on?
We're not out that much. No, we haven't spent anything yet. We hired the engineer and he went and looked at it. And he said, you know, this is kind of what the gist of this meeting will be. You've got lots of needs here. And I'd like to talk to the board about different ways of approaching it rather than just doing piecemeal stuff. And so he wants to come talk to you about that.
Chris Gottman, is Gottman Engineering?
Is the money for St. Mary's in this year's budget or is it in next year's budget?
There was money budgeted for it this year, though it hasn't been.
But it will be available for next year because now it's going to end up being in their reserve as we move forward.
Okay. The contract for water tank improvements for utility services has increased from just under thirty-one thousand to just under thirty-five thousand. That's a four thousand dollar increase there.
Yeah. Are we renewing the contract and it's going up? Or is that part of the multi-year contract?
It's part of a multi-year contract.
It's their escalator on the multi-year contract?
Yes.
Do we have a net contract? Do we have a backdoor if we don't like? Well, we've already committed to giving them a percentage if possible.
Right. And I can get that information for you guys.
Kind of like your contract.
All right. Motor Vehicle and Equipment, we asked for thirty-five thousand last year. Spent thirty thousand. This year, I'm asking for twenty-five. That would be for a small tractor, small little bucket tractor with a mower, pull behind PTO mower on it and a loader on the front for the purpose of loading the dump truck. At this point, in the middle of the night, we have to go to the street department, get their backhoe, go load the rock, take it back, go back down and get the dump truck, and then go back to the water system. We also have to borrow the street department's tractor, the city's tractor, and mow behind the wastewater ponds and behind the wastewater plant itself.
Oh, that's mine.
What kind of tractor are you looking for, Steve? Or is it yours?
No, I'm sitting here thinking, hmm.
We have down there is a one-ton dump truck.
That wasn't mine.
It's got a low.
It was.
Yes, it's a one-ton.
I was sitting there. I never touched it.
Yeah, it's perfect for the situation. Yeah, we'll keep using the street department equipment if needed.
And where would you purchase that from, Steve?
A lot of local supply, not the local, but surrounding towns. They sell little, if I say little, they're tractors. You know, they have tractors with loaders on them with brush hogs and boxways. They come on a trailer and.
So that would be an asset. The city buys it.
Yes.
Alliance, not the city, though. And it would be available for use in other departments.
For all departments.
The issue is being purchased with funds that if we expend them for water and sewer, it can't be used for any other purpose. So it's not like that money will be available to cover street facilities.
Don't we have an agreement now between the street department and Alliance for equipment use? There's no way you can get into the maintenance shed at midnight without contact?
No, we have access to the shed.
All right. So but apparently that's not feasible for you. You don't feel. What's the problem? That's what I'm getting at.
During, you know, during mowing season, days, you know, your mowing days are numbered to begin with. On a nice day where it's up, you're able to mow. You know, the street department, you know, uses their equipment also. So the same days that we need it, they're mowing because it's.
So there's not enough mowers, is what you're saying?
There's enough mowers, there's not enough tractors.
But you're going to use it for loading and for multiple.
Yeah, multi-purpose, loading, yard repairs.
So generally, the street department's equipment is too large for you, more than you need to do your work?
Yes.
It's kind of like the mini excavator. It's much more efficient, much more flexible. It works really well. Using a dump truck to haul a little amount of dirt today, they haul is kind of overkill. But it's the only way we have of moving it. So they use dump truck and the backhoe.
In all the tractor catalogs and locations, they sell a package deal. You know, it's a trailer, a tractor, a loader, a brush hog, tiller, and a box plate. I mean, you can buy those for twenty-one thousand dollars.
So what did you buy this last year?
They bought that.
A mini trackhoe is what it was.
No, you bought a Kubota tractor or something.
We bought a Kubota mini excavator.
But you also bought a Kubota zero term or something, didn't you?
The year before, we bought a Kubota zero term.
So you got that much mowing that you guys need two or three different?
Around these sludge ponds and behind the wastewater plant.
I mean, I think that zero term would be way more beneficial.
It's too rough behind there. When the city used to come down and mow everything, they wouldn't even let the new John Deere of the street department go back there. You know, it would be the old mower.
Rocks.
Rocks. There was an old junkyard, I guess. There's car parts. There's metal sticking up.
About three hundred old full tabs off here. All right, sewer. So on the water, we're going to raise four percent.
Page forty-two.
Yeah, sure. Well, I mean, that was the plan that we lived with last year. And if it drops down to goes four, there's, and I'll get that information for you so you can have it again. We had four percent and three percent, and it gets down to two percent eventually. And sewer area had a five percent. And there were these different percentages each year. It was designed to generate the revenue to build, take care of the operating expenses, and then build that reserve that we think we need, which we don't currently have. It's not adequate to cover the cost of our most expensive anticipated calamity. The only thing I want to ask about the water is, are you going to revisit the contract plan out here at the end of the street? We're paying full price for the lime and they got a cut rate on the water last year, year before last.
They got the same increase. They got the same increase as everybody else.
But they got the sweet deal in the beginning, though, before they got the increases.
Well, I guess I'll go back to my story again. If we had a industry coming to town that used that much water, would we not give them a better price than we would give me or you? I mean, we're comparing apples to oranges. The amount of lime that we use compared to the amount of water that they use. Just because we're paying full price for the lime, does that mean that they should pay full price for the water?
They just got a lot of people on fixed incomes around here, and four percent's another. I'm just saying it.
Well, and I understand that. And maybe it is something we certainly need to look at. But we're comparing apples to oranges when we compare the amount of lime to the amount of water and to the volume of. Put it this way. They are using a third of our water. We're using that much of their lime. I mean, if we were using as much lime as they are using of our water, I would expect that we should get a better deal. But we're a pimple on whatever compared to the amount of lime that we're using. Should we demand a better price for the lime? I mean, we're not a big customer of theirs.
But we still need to take a hard, long look at that four percent.
Yeah, we sure could do that or should do that.
On the sewer side, again, the five percent would be increased, bring projected revenue to.
What page is sewer?
Forty-two.
Forty-two. Bring sewer use fees up to basically six hundred and seventy thousand. Yeah, on the.
Hundred and ten thousand dollars worth of something.
Yeah, that's the return wet well. It's a wet well eighteen feet deep in between the clarifiers. The hydrogen gas is deteriorating the concrete. It's in need of being rebuilt at some point. I believe they're cracking. Maybe possibly one of the walls, the dirt next to it keeps washing away, going somewhere.
Could you use that one little machine, get in there?
We would have to get in there. It's too large for the machine. We'd have to do bypass pumping and not equip it to do that.
Steve, the eighty-five that you got in there for this year, the eighty-five thousand?
Yes.
Is most of that going to carry over?
Yeah, at this time, yes.
Okay. Because I think, well, Sue just pulled up, you had the VFD drives. I mean, that's what was supposed to be used for this year. Didn't you do that anyway?
Yes, we got that done for about eight thousand.
Okay. Good. And list station repairs, RES list station repair?
That's the same thing.
Same what?
That's the wet well between the clarifiers and.
You didn't do that?
No.
And then you got flow equipment on waste reing and the RES. That was part of that too. So that's going to carry over?
Yes.
Okay.
I also have on there for a trailer. It'll de-water our biosalts from the wastewater plant. Right now, we have Bealman's or not Bealman anymore, but Metro Wag or some brush hog them off. And we pay for that by the ground.
So Sue, right now, the things that he did not spend that were anticipated in the budget, you don't have reflected in the reserves for new fund balance?
No, but on the water side, it's not reflected in the expense either.
Yeah. Well, in the budget, it's not the expense.
Right. Right.
Back to the, uh, should de-watering box for the bio solids. Right now, we budget fifty thousand a year for renewable fuels.
Yeah, we're only getting to two.
It's a million gallon concrete tank down there. You have to maintain a level on that, if it gets too high, then, you know, we're out of permit and we're in that shit. The de-watering box would take the solids, they go to the tank and the water, and run it into a, a roll-off container or a, a trailer mounted unit. And it would break, bring solids from like a one percent solids, uh, up to almost twenty percent solids. And we could dump that at a, a local landfill.
So what's the cost of the trailer?
There are different models of trailers, they range anywhere from, um, forty thousand to sixty thousand.
So I guess what I would, what I would be driving at is, is what is the, uh, cost benefit analysis? So, if, if we buy the trailer, when do we come back even on our investment, when do we start saving?
Uh, it would take less than two years, I believe.
Could you buy a used one?
No, no, once people have these, they don't give a...
What kind of trailer is it?
It's a de-watering trailer made by a company called Flowtrains. Yeah, you put the solids, put solids and liquid in there, you add a polymer to it, the solids fall out, and they just keep compacting. And it'll actually, you can dump it out on the ground when you're done, and it'll dry till it does. But, uh, right now, we pay for, pay like a gallon to haul off a one percent solution.
So only one percent of solids?
Yes.
So we're paying a lot just to haul up ninety-nine percent water?
Yeah, and we've done some studies on it down there at the wastewater plant, and we believe we can produce our sludge removal cost back, you know, twenty to thirty thousand a year.
What do you, oldest trailer?
Uh, one-ton truck would pull the trailer, uh, the top kicks that the street department owns would pull the larger trailer, and they also have twenty and thirty-yard roll-off containers. So there's many, many different options to go with them. Once it gets full of, uh, just call it...
TWR?
Yeah, you contact a local trash carrier, who we would decide, is able to take it to the landfill and take it and dump it and bring it back.
So, infrastructure improvements in both water and sewer, or say sewer that you identified here, uh, failure to do those things, would, would failure to do those things affect our report to the DNR on the C-MOM?
On the, uh, according to the C-MOM, at this time, um, they're asking for, you know, smoke testing, you know, still asking for the manhole inspections, any rotation, still having, not asking for anything, but, uh, and sewer line inspections.
I mean, we, we have to report our progress.
Yes, yes, and we are on schedule with that. And if you'll notice in the small equipment line there, that's the twenty thousand, which is up from five thousand, for the sewer camera and the smoke machine, and that is also to stay, uh, in accordance with their, with their schedule.
Well, I think we need to, uh, get together and make some of the revisions that we talked about in this, to, because things we've come up with here tonight just, we really didn't account for, that we need to, to count for. But, uh, overall, I thought the number's not going to change, it's going to be in balance and, you know, it's, you know, I guess one of the questions relative to rates would be, um, the degree to which you want to, to, to build your reserves, kind of emergency reserve, because that was what motivated, I mean, we have to comply with the system improvements under our DNR order, uh, you know, we, we, we need to do certain things at the, at the water plant that we know about, uh, we, we certainly need some water system repairs, uh, but, you know, kind of the real decision that I think drove the, the rate discussion last year was, in what position do we need to be, uh, so that we can respond to the unknown? And how much cash in reserve is comfortable for the water and sewer system, so that if, if something really bad happened, we'd be able to respond to it? And, uh, and, and, and that's kind of what that rate schedule was designed to, to anticipate and to build over a period of years to where you got to that, that, that point, which, and at that level, the increases, you know, went down, the annual adjustments were relatively small. I think that was a, I don't remember exactly, but it was like three years of the kind of four to five, three percent, then it drops down to...
Three percent, and then...
Then two. So, it doesn't mean that you could do two percent this year, it would just mean that at some point, you know, you're either going to take longer to get to your, to your goal, or, you know, you're going to maybe, just, you know, readjust the order in which you want to, want to consider the rate adjustments. Any questions for Steve?
Thanks, Steve.
Good job. Good job.
Very good.
Thank you, thank you. Some kind of nervous there, so...
Well, you know, we got kind of the... Administrator, and we've got Brenda, which we already know, I take the car out of Brenda's and there isn't really anything else in there, extra. I think that's what we discussed before we... Don't miss it. All right, we need to have one, at least one, probably two more meetings to...
We're doing a work session before next...
Yeah, but that's to just deal with... Cockburn's proposal.
Have you been downstairs to see what...
System improvement.
You need to walk down.
One of the people there, right now?
You, you just need to walk down.
We probably need, as Martin's saying, another meeting or two, just to, now you got all the information, now we just need to, gather it all up and decide what we're going to come up with.
Go to the beginning and from the philosophy on...
Well, I mean, I think we know things that, and I don't want to just pull an item out of the thin air, but, you know, it's, I'll use Brenda's budget as an example, she put ten thousand dollars in for a car that was just on her wish list, because, you know, we, we lost Jimmy's car, and he's using, he wants to use his truck, I mean, he's, that's his idea, and we're giving him mileage, and it's working out fine. So I said to Brenda, I said, "You know, we don't need to buy a car, Jimmy likes what we do, the way we're doing it now, and it's more efficient for the city." So there's ten thousand dollars. So, there's a, you know, I, I think we have those things, we know kind of where they are now, and, uh, I, I think my job is to compile them, and before we meet next, to say, you know, here are our list of things that, from the discussions with department heads and our own, my, my sense of your, your position, that, that you can consider not spending for, you know, the building department, or the police department, or the public works department, and here's the amount of money, and, and here's how much we can save out of all of that, if you want to do that, and then that's the amount of money that's available for us to spend for the thing that we haven't done yet, and decide of, over the, if you have a hundred thousand dollars, you know, how would you like to use it? And, um, and, and I think I'm kind of prepared to make that, at a point where I can make that report to you, we just have to plan a meeting where we can discuss it. When can we meet? Next week.
Monday's landmarks, Tuesday's tourism on Tuesday. I got it right here.
We can...
Leaves Wednesday.
Leaves Wednesday? That leaves Wednesday.
Leaves Wednesday.
Twenty-first?
I like us today.
Can you all make it Wednesday? Well, if we can't, we can't.
Pick any day, and whoever can make it, I'm sure will be here, and whoever can't...
Six o'clock?
Is six o'clock too early?
Six-thirty, yeah, generally for six, six o'clock is too early for Linda. What'd she say?
Six-thirty? We're doing six-thirty. On Wednesday? That's Wednesday. And then there'll be a six o'clock work session on Thursday as well.
Lot of nights out.
Thursday and Wednesday?
It's three, but then it's six. Thirty.
Thirty.
Oh.
Six, six on Thursday?
Oh, yes, six on Thursday.
Jeff? Thank you. I've got a couple of things I'd like to bring up. Where do we stand on the fire truck committee?
Um, I'll have it by next week, I'm still trying to decide on the, the names, we've got several submitted, and I'll try to have something for you guys by next week.
Something else that's been brought to my attention by several people, there's a lot of grass clippings being thrown out in the streets, isn't there an ordinance on that?
It happens every year, and the police department's position is, and I can't dispute it, is we have to catch the people doing it. The fact that it's there after the fact doesn't, isn't sufficient evidence to blame a person for a violation, that you have to see the person who did it. Can't hold the property owner responsible.
Some of it's contractors, it's not...
Oh, I thought you were talking about residents.
Yeah, but it's...
Yeah, I got it.
It's not the property owner doing it, it's who he's hiring out. And then the rain comes, like we had Monday, and it washes down to the drains.
They can't hold the property owner responsible for it just because it's there. It resets the position of the prosecuting attorney. So we try, and we see them, we take, they write them a ticket.
It's just starting to look kind of trashy all over town.
Did you say grass?
Yeah.
That, that is really a problem. Uh, so who is, who is responsible for driving around checking that out? Is it the police department? Is it...
Again, the violation is not, is, is the person who's putting the grass off, you know, they're discharging the moor into the street.
Then it's all over town.
The property owner tell you who's doing it?
And the police department has to, or somebody has to see who's doing it.
Yeah.
Now, whether it's a police officer, or Jimmy, when I'm out, he's out, or me when I'm out, if you see, if you see somebody doing it...
Citations for this.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta identify the person who's doing it.
Well...
And, and...
And when the grass goes into the street, what, what is the...
Once you drive by and you see grass in the street, there's no, you can't, I think I know who did it, but I can't prove it.
If somebody should know that, okay, this is on our list to watch for the next guy someone's mowing his grass, I mean, it's, we all understand the, the tax that cuts on the, the water treatment plant and the aesthetics of the city, and, uh, yeah, it's, it's a big issue, and I go by, there's several house homeowners that do that, week after week after week after week. Yeah. And somebody can knock on their door and say, "Hey, look, I didn't see you doing this, I can't write a citation."
But this is hurting our water department.
But I'm going to tell you, this is against the law, this is St. Genevieve, and if I come back by here and I see you doing it...
We are not doing that.
And I see you doing it, you're going to get a citation. That probably, I would say a lot of people that do that are unaware that there's, that it's an issue. You know, they're not, they're not trying to break the law, but I would, I would really like, I mean, it's just one of those things, you know, it frustrates you and...
Proactive.
Yeah.
Well, Monday, Monday there was a sidewalk, you couldn't see the concrete, it was green, looked like astroturf.
Last night I was out in the middle of the drive, blowing grass clippings back in. I took my mower out in the middle of the street, and I'm sure my neighbors thought, "What is she doing mowing the road?"
Our street department, partial part, would never do anything like that, right? Ever. They wouldn't let, they wouldn't miss the direction of mowing and discharge into the street.
I think they are aware.
We wouldn't give a ticket.
This is street sweeper broke, I haven't seen him around town for a while.
I'd hope not.
It was running.
I know he used to say go by my house, but I haven't seen him for weeks, but maybe I ain't there.
Well, last week they were kind of concentrating on downtown, it's out and about.
Are we done?
Yeah.
Leave the home.
Looks like we're done. Don, do you have anything else?
That's it, no, that's it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Don, thanks for bringing that up.
It's like taking grass and throwing it out.
I bet most people just don't realize that they're not supposed to be...
I think what I'll do is, uh, I think we're going to put together maybe a door hanger or something.
Maybe that's something we need to have, Don...
See it, just put it on the door hanger.
And Steve, how big of a problem is...
I guess, I guess they just leave the street sweep, they're going to come by and get...
I know Don has it, Don has it on our local channel, he has it on, maybe you asked him to announce it again.
Yeah, I think, I think what Tom's saying, we need to communicate to people that we're seeing, we're paying attention to them.
I can't prove you're doing it, it's a different mower before you come down.